Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order at this time. Mr. Castater, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Gunther?
Present.
Mr. Beckman?
Here.
Mr. Kleinfelder?
Present.
Mrs. Webb?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Would everyone please stand and join the board in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dr. Rice, would you like to go over the agenda for us, please?
Yes, sir. After we approve and review previous minutes, we will begin the evening with a presentation from middle school, three middle school students that are members of the FCC LA, and they have a presentation tonight about AI. After that, we have a few items for board discussion, ten pieces of policy. We have an MOU between the district and the Ross Education Association that I'll review. You'll actually have an opportunity to vote on that later this evening. And then the hot topic for this evening, school calendars, we'll work through that as well. We'll have legislative report, Butler Tech report, opportunity for public comments, and then superintendent's reports and recommendations, which will involve personnel. Policy approval that was read at last board meeting, and then that MOU that I mentioned earlier. And then we'll turn it over to Mr. Castater for the treasurer's report and recommendations.
We have a light agenda under the treasurer's section tonight, just a handful of donations, and then three monthly reports that we approve every month.
Okay, great. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelder?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Okay. We have the approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, go ahead, call the roll, please.
Mr. Kleinfelder?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes. Motion passes. And now, we have an opportunity to hear from our Ross Middle School FCC LA.
Good evening, I'm Audrey Farley.
I'm Carly Coleman.
And I'm Josie Abbas, and we are eighth grade members of the Ross Middle School FCC LA.
For anyone unfamiliar with FCC LA, FCC LA stands for Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America.
FCC LA is a national student organization that helps members develop leadership and workplace skills to prepare for both college and careers.
This is done through peer-to-peer education, community engagement, and the application of skills learned in our life skills class.
The career development event Carly, Josie, and I are working on this year is called Public Policy Advocate. We are here tonight to advocate for a policy we feel needs to be addressed in the Ross local schools.
That policy is the use of AI, or artificial intelligence.
As I'm sure most of you are aware, artificial intelligence allows computers to simulate learning, comprehension, problem-solving, and creativity, things we should be doing in the classroom as students. Our opinion is that AI itself cannot fully match humans' emotions and creativity.
So, for example, if a student is given an assignment to write a paper on the Civil War or inflation, for example, they could very easily type that into their computer and have the work done for them.
With that example, your first thought might be that a student who does that is cheating someone else who does their work for them. But a calculator is also a tool that might be thought of as cheating, and so could spell check. We wanted to use an example of inflation to show you how fast AI works, so we already have it typed in, and then that's how fast it works, basically.
We are here to ask our school board to consider how AI fits into our education. In Massachusetts, parents of a high school senior sued his teachers, school faculty members, and a local school committee for punishments he received after he was caught using AI for research and to make an outline for a history essay. Therefore, we think the policy for Ross local schools should include guidelines about allowing AI to be used for research but not fully relying on it.
A specific policy on AI might have helped prevent this. We have checked current policies regarding the use of AI around the country and specifically in our local area. Twenty-two states and their Departments of Education now have official guidance or policy on the use of AI in K-12 schools.
Ohio has developed a toolkit for schools that provides guidance and resources for districts that covers policy development, resources for stakeholders, and summaries of relevant AI guidelines. We have provided each of you a copy of that toolkit.
We checked with Mr. Rice about the Ross policy, and he explained that we do not currently have a policy regarding AI.
We checked with neighboring schools like Talawanda and Hamilton. Hamilton does not have an AI policy, but like Ross, but Talawanda does.
We looked at Talawanda's policy, and we are hoping to have something similar to this.
As our local school board, we ask you to please develop some kind of AI policy so staff and students understand how AI fits into learning in our district.
Thank you for your time this evening, are there any questions?
So, have you all used AI in some way or form?
Um, maybe you're allowed. I have with calculators, but nothing like ChatGPT can create something.
Okay. Do you have friends that have used ChatGPT?
Yes, sir.
And what did they think of it?
They love it.
Okay.
I think it's really important to try to grasp and hold on to it because it's not going away. I know in my job, we use it extensively, but there's a, I work with a lot of engineers, and they are not the best at phrasing things nicely. I don't know, their tact isn't the greatest. So, there's a lot of times we'll write reports for clients, and we can put it in there and say, make it look, make it nicer. And, you know, within a minute, we've got a well-written report that's very nice. I think it's, you know, but it's my opinion anyway, to, you know, try to cultivate that and be able to use it in your careers. So, it's something that we can talk about, so.
Yeah, I definitely think you're right, it's not going to go away. And it's actually, it's kind of scary how good it works. The only, my only concern with anything with like a ChatGPT would be where it's pulling its data sources from. Obviously, you know, we don't, we don't want to rely on, you know, bad data. But yeah, that would be one of my concerns with using that, and I think that's something that we would want to kind of factor in if we, you know, when and if we get that policy together.
It's something similar, I'll myself a little bit, but I mean Wikipedia was the only thing that really we would go to, and we were told that's not the only thing you can source anymore. So, it's kind of, you know, gone from encyclopedias to Wikipedia to, you know, now we're kind of at just a different generation, so it's something people have tackled before in the past.
Well, it's kind of scary, while they were talking, I put in ChatGTP, developing policy for AI use in K-12 schools, and it spits out several screens of information.
Are you making a motion?
No, I'm not. But it's, it's really frightening what it can do, in a lot of ways, and I think you got to figure out a positive way to use it and document where you're getting, you know, and verifying the sources, because you don't know what, because one of the things Steve and I went to at Capitol Conference was AI, and the lawyers that were using it were getting in trouble in court because it was citing cases that might have been a phony mock trial case that somehow it picked up and grabbed some information on, and then they submitted it to the judge, and it wasn't a real court case, and they were getting disbarred and reprimanded and contempt of court and stuff. So, you don't know where it's coming from, but it definitely is coming, and we've got to figure out something. A lot of, I'll look forward to reading this because it's kind of one of the things I'm interested in.
We mentioned this last board meeting, very timely. We're studying, Ms. Doblinger is looking at board policy right now. OSBA, which, who sets kind of rights policy for school districts in Ohio, has issued in their quarterly report of December, new policy surrounding AI. I loved you guys' opening statement, that it doesn't take the emotion, the feel, the human nature out of it, because with all new technology, our worry always is it's just going to take humans out of it, right? We're going to be run by machines, but I think that's, that's an absolute key point. Ms. Morgan shared with us earlier this year, from the House of Rights Commission, there's some language that they're asking us to look at because some of this AI technology is discriminatory in nature. One of the examples they gave us, a school district used it said, to ask where our discipline infractions are coming from and who is, who is committing our discipline fractions. And this particular district was sued because their AI report was predominantly about African-Americans in that district. So, you have to be careful, so any policy that we have to look at, we'll have to follow those Ohio Civil Rights Guidelines as well. So, a lot being done behind the scenes, and I would hope in the next couple of months that we'll have some policy to present to the board for discussion. So, thank you.
Great, anything else ladies? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Very well done, let's give them a round of applause. All right. Let's go to items for board discussion, Dr. Rice.
Thank you. We have ten items for policy under letter A this evening, and I will say this as a disclaimer. When we get through these ten policies, we will be caught up. So, we've done about a hundred and thirty pieces of policy at the first half of the school year. After this, it will now be just normal maintenance as OSBA releases new policy, making sure ours are up to date. So, we'll jump right in. The first piece of policy I have for you tonight is BDC, executive sessions. This is an updated policy. This is based on recent Ohio Supreme Court ruling, simple word changes. It deals with when boards need to go into executive session to discuss the purchase of property or the sale of property at a competitive bid process. Any questions over BDC? Next piece of policy is EDE, computer online services acceptable use and internet safety. This is updated policy. This sets limits on the ability of school districts and technology providers to electronically access or monitor school issued devices. You may have heard of Senate Bill 29, it's been a hot topic in public schools for the last few months. Another one of those beautiful pieces of legislation that Columbus passed and then realized it wasn't good legislation and it wasn't written correctly. So, they've already passed an emergency bill, and the governor signed it, making it effective immediately for changes on Senate Bill 29, because it, in its original state, it was not doable. It was just simply not able to be done, the things that they were requiring of public schools. But in a nutshell, what it, what it means for us is if we were to look at a student's computer access, what they're searching, anything along those lines, we have to give a notice to their parents that we're looking into it and why we're looking into it. You still have permissions to do those sorts of things, safety and security-wise supersedes anything, but it just sets some parameters. And on the back end, it requires technology providers to do some different things, but for a school standpoint, it's, it's really just about the access for those devices. But we've talked about Senate Bill 29 with some of our digital platforms, and we're going to have to make some decisions on some of those providers based on the requirements of Senate Bill 29. But that's what EDE is, any questions about that?
So, on a school device on school property, we'd still would have to notify, if that was issued to a student, you have to notify the parents?
Yeah, it doesn't matter where, actually.
Okay.
At home or on school property, or on their phone, on our network, anything along those lines.
So, are most of our school computers, they're what I would call a whitelist, are you familiar with that?
Yeah.
Is that, how low are our devices are set up, where they're only allowed to go to certain sites and certain things?
Yes, yes, but they still, you know, we'll get hits every day. A student is doing a report in social studies on gun control, so they search up, and gun is in it, and we'll get a hit on that. So, what this fix says is, you don't have to notify the parents on that because you know it was a legitimate reason why they were searching that. The previous version of it said you had to notify the parents. So, those are like the types of semantics fixes that we're seeing with it.
Okay. When they take their computers home, are they signing into a VPN here to go through the same type of firewall?
No, they can get on their own Wi-Fi, but because they're Chromebooks, we can see what they're looking for.
Okay.
Yep. And that's really the origin of this. If you want to know that backstory, give me a call, and I'll tell you where the Senate Bill 29 came from. Next policy, GCD, professional staff hiring, and this couples with GDC, GDCA, and GDD. Support staff recruiting, posting of vacancies, hiring, this is an updated policy. This switches all things for licensure from ODE, or what was ODE, to the State Board of Education. It also reduces the length of pre-employment public notices for retire-rehire from sixty days to thirty days if the board says it's an urgent necessity. Without this urgent necessity, the sixty-day public notice and meeting requirements still remain. Any questions about those policies? Next item, IC and ICA, school year, school calendar, updated policy. Clarifies that boards of education must hold a public hearing on their school calendar no later than thirty days prior to its adoption. It does not require a standalone meeting. The requirement can be met by including the calendar hearing and another public hearing or board meeting. Any questions about IC or ICA? Next couple policies, IGAE, health education, and IGAH, IGIAI, family life education and sex education, these are updated. Sets requirements for instruction in venereal diseases, including what must be included in this instruction. If a district or school chooses to offer additional instruction based outside of what has been approved as state curriculum, then we, as a district, have a responsibility to notify the parents that we're doing that and why we're doing that. So, guess what we're not going to do? Anything outside of the state curriculum on that. This also changes the references of venereal diseases education to sexually transmitted infection education. Additionally, sexually transmitted infection education must now teach that conceiving children at an early age or outside of marriage increases the likelihood of hardship in life, removing the current requirement to teach that conceiving children outside of wedlock is likely to have harmful consequences for the children, for the child, the child's parents, and society. It also replaces other references from wedlock to the term marriage. That's what they're getting involved in in Columbus. Any issues with those policies? Next item, I, or I'm sorry, JECBC, admission of student from non-charter to home education, updated policy. I think this is the last one we have to update for House Bill 33 in home education. This clarifies languages that is in other policies as it relates to extracurricular activities for home-educated or non-enrolled but residential students. Any questions about that policy? And the last two I have this evening, JED, student absences and excuses, and JEDA, truancy. These are updated policies. This policy, these policies must allow students in kindergarten through grades twelve to be allowed to have three, up to three excused absences each year, to take holidays for religious or spiritual reasons, or to participate in organized religious or spiritual activities. Districts cannot impose an academic penalty for such absences, and students must be allowed to participate in interscholastic activities, athletics, and extracurricular activities on those days which are absence for religious expression days. Any questions about those two policies? And that's all I have for policies this evening.
Okay, thank you. And we'll be approving those at next month's meeting.
That's the plan.
Okay.
Next item I have for discussion this evening, and then we will take action on it hopefully later this evening, is item B, MOU. This is in regards to, we had an intervention specialist that resigned earlier this fall. We've had the job posted and continue to have it posted, we've had zero, zero qualified licensed applicants. We were hoping that in, with this December round of grads, we would have some of them, but as of yet, we have not. So, this MOU sets in place an opportunity for teachers in other buildings outside of their workday to come over and serve those students for their specifically designed instruction. And we set the rate through that, we went back and forth lots with lawyers, getting the language exactly right, and it's working. We've got teachers that have taken advantage of it, are serving the students' needs in that classroom, and I think it's going pretty smoothly so far. So, that's what that MOU is about. Any MOUs just for boards of education, any MOUs are for a set specific time. If it needs to be rolled over into the contract, it has to be negotiated with the next contract. So, these aren't indefinite MOUs. Any questions about the MOU? The last, the last item I have for discussion this evening are school calendars. I would like to take an opportunity, as we introduce them, to talk to you a little bit about the process of how we got here with the school calendars. If you'll entertain me a little bit on that. So, this has been a hot topic, I think after hour one of me signing my contract, I was, I had opinions shared with me about what they thought of the school calendar, so I heard that loud and clear. So, one of the things that we wanted to do is make sure that all of our stakeholders had an opportunity to share their opinions on, on the school calendar, the academic calendar. So, we've developed, the team developed a series of questions. We, we did receive input from building leadership. We launched the survey with social media blasts and emails. We allowed the survey to be open for two weeks. They had over eight hundred responses. We surveyed three different stakeholder groups, our staff, all staff, our parents and guardians, and then our students. We kept those as separate surveys so we could differentiate the data for each of them. We then, we then, I'm sorry, sent out the results, the data results, to the staff, the takeaways from that data. We then met with LMC, and some of those members are here today, for over an hour to discuss some, some things that were hanging out there and some specifics with each calendar that were challenges for us. After that, after we came to some agreements on those, we emailed out, and again, social media blast, about the, the three specific calendars that we're proposing. We talked about next steps, including this board meeting tonight, inviting public comment. I've had a couple of emails with questions, but many emails with praise. And then we're here tonight to have, to have some further conversation about, about those calendars. I would like to thank our team, Emily, Becky here, Tracy behind the scenes, for all of their work. This is a huge endeavor, and I hope the community understands how big of an endeavor this is to try to fit a calendar to the needs of everybody involved. There are things that we have to look at. We have a certain amount of days that are negotiated with our teachers that they, that they have to work. We certainly want the maximum amount of student seat days in our calendar that we can possibly get. We have compliance things, we have breaks that people want, some breaks that don't, people don't want. What we heard loud and clear with the survey data, and I'll just talk about some of the patterns, I will give this disclaimer, I think we were pleasantly surprised and shocked that our two main stakeholder groups, our parents and guardians and our staffs, the data was eerily similar. I thought along the way, we were going to have to make some tough decisions, like one group said they want this, and another group said this, but we, we were really lockstep, which honestly, it was a blessing, so we didn't have to anger anyone on that. So, what we heard loud and clear were that the community and our staff desired a longer summer break, period. And they were willing to sacrifice some of the breaks during the school year, i.e. fall break, and a week off for Thanksgiving to get a longer summer break. So, that was sort of the preference where, where we started, or where Emily really, Emily's the, call it Emily's calendar, where Emily started with the calendar on that. So, other things we surveyed the community about, where do you want spring break? We gave them different options on that. Both stakeholders, I was really shocked at this one, wanted it tied to Easter, even though Easter can sometimes be later in the school year. They wanted it tied to Easter. LMC, I want to give a shout out to them, they were great collaborators on this. There were things that we took to the table that honestly, it didn't really matter to us, and I'll give you an example on the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar. It was more about, you know, we're going to work it, so you tell us where your folks want to work it. And they were great collabora, collaborators on that. Some things in the process with the LMC that came up were, we've had a pattern of tying PD days or workdays at the end of semesters, but if you think about it, all of our elementary folks are on trimesters. So, we took a PD day and tied that to the end of a trimester next year, or for the next three years, and we have one that's tied to the end of, of a semester, so they each have that opportunity to do some record-keeping in there, because contractually, they get a couple of hours on those days. Overwhelmingly, both groups wanted the start for the school year to be in the third week in August, and overwhelmingly, people wanted the end date to be before Memorial Day. Excuse me. And you think about why before Memorial Day, or I should say at Memorial Day. Our testing, our state testing is done in April, so we have kids in May that don't have a test hanging over their head. It is a challenge as a teacher to keep their interest and keep their focus, and both stakeholder groups recognize that and recognize that if we come back even for two days after Memorial Day, those are going to be really challenging to keep kids engaged for those two days. So, I say all that because the, the first calendar we looked at, the twenty-five, twenty-six, Memorial Day is very early that year. So, it was very hard for us, matter of fact, impossible for us to get all the instructional days, contract days that we needed without either, either starting our teachers that third week in August or going after Memorial Day. So, again, collaborative nature of the LMC, we sat with them and we said, you tell us what you want. Do you want a couple of days in that third week, knowing that we're going against what the survey data says, or do you want them a couple of days after Memorial Day, going against what the survey data says? And they overwhelmingly, I don't even think they thought about it, said, third week in August, we, we don't want to come back after Memorial Day. So, those are those kind of things, again, from an administrative point. We could have set that, but why? Honestly, it's, it's more about them and the classroom. So, we, we had several different things that we worked through with LMC on that. The other one that I would like to mention specifically is November election days. You'll notice, and, and Tracy and Emily's office is, is polling districts right now to see what districts are in, it's about fifty-fifty right now, who's in during Election Day, that Election Day in November, and who's not in. We feel very comfortable that we can be in session on that day. We only have two buildings that are used as polling locations. Both of those buildings have external exits for the polling locations and have doors that can be locked and manned, so they can't get in, so the general public cannot get into the rest of the building. And we have SSOs in each of those buildings, so we can simply position them at those doors. What we were finding when we took that day off is that day became a four-day weekend. People would take the Monday off, students would take the Monday off and turn it into a four-day weekend, so we're really losing two days in that weekend in November. So, that was, that was a change we wanted to make. And we can revisit it on, you know, if we have a contentious presidential election and feel like, as a community, it's just better for us to take that day, we can revisit that at a later date if, if we so choose. But I think, I think we're all, we, we spoke with our building principals about it, we spoke with everybody at SSOs, and everybody was comfortable with our plan on that. At this time, if there's any questions about the calendars, Emily and Becky are here as well, please let us know.
Voting locations are middle school and?
Elder.
Elder, correct?
Uh huh.
And for the foreseeable future, we will be a voting location?
Yeah, they love us, they love those two buildings. We've got it down to a science.
We don't have a choice about that. The Board of Elections?
Oh, okay, yeah.
Has the authority by law to dictate where polling places will be. So, they basically told us those buildings will be used for polling locations.
They'll work with you on locations in the building.
Yeah, but I mean.
But yeah.
I don't have any questions, but I'm very excited about having a multi-year calendar for the first time in a long time, so that people can make vacation plans that, you know, some people work places where they have to make their plans in November for the whole following year. I think it helps with those situations, and I'm just glad we're looking at it as a consistent, long-term plan, and it can be added to and continue to progress three years out in perpetuity, so good idea. I don't care if we will go to school on Saturdays, Sundays, day after Thanksgiving, I, you know, that's, I'm not working it, so, but I, I think it's, as long as everybody's in consensus, I think is a good process, so I'm pretty happy with it.
And we'll, and we'll survey our folks again as we near the end of these calendars to make sure everybody's satisfied, and we may find out that our staff needs some breaks in, in October, so they may want a fall break again, they realize that's too long of a stretch, so we'll adapt as needed.
And I'm sure the state will move all the testing dates or do something just to make it even more.
So, how many student days do we have now, students and instructional days?
One hundred and seventy-three, yeah.
One seventy-three?
The goal was one seventy-five.
Pardon?
The goal for moving forward was to increase it by two days.
Yeah, so we're one seventy-five in the proposed.
It would be one seventy-five.
Yeah, that's what I meant, in the future, it'd be one seventy-five.
Seventy-five, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Which is pretty average with both districts in this area, if not more. The transition to hours shifted a lot of school districts' number of days in session, because they needed less days, and so.
Right.
We're, we're on the actual high-end student days in our area.
Yeah, I'd just like to get back to one seventy-eight someday, where we were in the past. You know, I just, I can't, I scratch my head at, we need students, there's more than, there's more things than ever that students need to learn, and more that we need to do, but yet, we've cut the number of instructional days over the years, it doesn't make sense.
No, I, I agree, and, you know.
I'm glad to see we're moving forward in the right direction, though.
We had a lot of conversation about the three PD days before the school year, and the reason why we landed on that is every year, there are more compliance-type things that our staff has to do, every year. I mean, there's now an AED that we just approved and in a policy, every year. So, the more that we can get that out of the way before students come, now our focus is just on the students and not having to sit through this ridiculous sixty-minute video that I can just click through.
Yeah, I agree, I think that's, that's good, having it in the beginning of the year. I think that's, that's good, having it in the beginning of the year. Makes a lot of sense.
You know, along with what Keith was saying about having a multi-year, multi-year plan now, did you get any negative feedback about putting three years' worth of calendars out?
Zero. It was sort of what Mr. Kleinfelter said, like, thank you, now I can plan, you know, now we know what's coming. I think about like Disney trips, people plan those two years in advance, so this gives them an opportunity.
And, and as far as any negative feedback you've gotten, is it just, hey, we, we just want a week off at Thanksgiving, or just kind of like things like that, or?
It's not negative feedback. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's negative feedback. It's just when you survey people, everybody's got an idea.
You can't, yeah, you can't.
You know, I mean, we had some pretty wild ideas, tie spring break to opening day. I mean, it was just, it was just.
Oh, I like that.
It's just, you know, everybody's got an opinion. So you just say, yeah, thank you, thank you for your opinion, appreciate that. Hadn't thought of that.
Well, I think we all appreciate the time and effort that you and Emily and the rest of your staff have put into the, into the survey. Certainly, it's the right way to go, to be, make it as collaborative a process as possible, and that we made sure we included the parents. Very important.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Who made, who responded?
It was over four hundred parents, like four hundred and eleven, I think, was the number. It was like two hundred and seventeen staff members. And I, I'm going to, I'll just put this disclaimer out there. I didn't use the student data because seven hu, seven hundred of them responded on the survey, and they said yes to everything. They wanted longer summers, a week off for Thanksgiving, two weeks off for Christmas, so it was not really usable data.
So we were in school for about a hundred and twenty days?
Correct. Correct.
And off on Halloween.
Yeah, correct.
Day after Halloween. Day after the Super Bowl.
Yeah, I didn't know if you left out like a comment section on purpose when the survey went out.
There were some emails from students about hunting days off and other, other things, so, yeah.
No, I, I've heard nothing but positive feedback, too, from just, you know, people in my world, and I, I do appreciate the three-year plan for planning purposes, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the biggest takeaway I got was, we, we, I, I received a lot of positive feedback regarding the fact that we tried to be inclusive for everybody, to get everybody's, you know, from, from all stakeholders. So that was, that was definitely great.
Good.
All right, any other comments or questions about the calendars? Okay, thank you, Dr. Rice. Moving on to the legislative report.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things, and Dr. Rice already mentioned the House Bill two fourteen that goes into effect January one about the religious exemption for students up to three approved days. And we're already in, in a good spot with this one, but House Bill two fifty also goes into effect January one. It's the cellphone law, where schools have to adopt a policy. They don't have to ban cellphones, but they have to adopt a policy, and, and we have that in place here at Ross. We had that in place at the beginning of the year, so we were ahead of the game with that one. And then the, the last one I have is Senate Bill one oh four, and that's the bathroom bill, and that goes into effect February twenty-fifth. So, and that just states that students who, whatever they were, whatever biology they were born with is the bathroom that they can use, so.
So one item I would like to point out to that, because we will be bringing this to the Board in the next couple of months, and where Ohio is a little bit unique, since they've passed this, is it's in direct conflict with federal regulations right now that are out there for Title IX, which Title IX says by choice, state says by biology. So what OSBA is going to do is, is set some policy that the Board will have to make a decision. Are we filing federal Title IX or state? And that will be up to you guys to make that decision, but what, once we get that policy from OSBA, we'll, we'll work through that as a Board, how we, how we come to consensus on that. And then, once the Board adopts that as policy, then it will be up to us to enforce whatever that policy is in the buildings. Does that make sense? There's one other, just legislative update, House Bill eight, it's called the Parent Rights Act. It did slide through. It's, it, it's a scaled-down version of where it started, though, and, and that's similar to the bathroom bill in terms of where it started and where it finished. Essentially, it boils down to if there's any mental health services, therapy, conversations that are had between a district employee and a student, the parents have to be notified. That's, that's in its simplest terms. Like anything else, I mean, we were seeing this federal government, they try to slide everything in there, but a lot of that got, kind of all that minutia got removed from it thankfully at the end. But that, at its, at its crux, that's what it's about. So hear probably more about that as well.
Does the student, do you notify the parent in every case, or only if the student seems like they may harm themselves, or?
Any sort of mental health-type conversation. It started, it began about a, it began about the issue of transgender.
Yeah.
And if you're, if you're treating a student out in another, as a gender that they choose, but not telling the parents, that was kind of the origin of that bill, that school districts were doing that, treating a biological girl as the male that he, that child wanted to be, but they weren't notifying the parents. So that's, that was where the, the bill started. And it ended with, any sort of counseling, therapy, anything along those lines, you can't do or say with the student without telling the parent. There were add-ons in there that were crazy. I, one, a legal update, I went to, that said if a student skinned, skinned their knee, like my three boys, skinned their knee every day, you, the nurses weren't allowed to put a Band-Aid on that skinned knee until they got parent permission. That's how the bill started. I mean, they started adding things like that in there. Like, there was another example, two kids get into an argument in the gaga pit, and a teacher pulls them out, or an aide pulls them out, and counsels them to settle down. That was considered counseling, and they now had to call home. Like, how many conversations do our folks have every day with kids saying, knocking off?
That got stricken out?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Yeah, that's what I said. This is a much scaled-down version of it.
Okay, okay. What about pregnancy?
Yeah.
Have to notify the parents?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay.
More to come on House Bill eight.
All right. Butler Tech report, Mr. Kleinfelter.
It was a shortened meeting due to the annual dinner for all the old Butler Tech Board members that get invited back each year to experience the food of the culinary students. Rich Emery, myself, were there from Ross, and a very good meal by Chef Simpson. He used to be the chef at Houston Woods Lodge, and he's been at Butler Tech about three or four years now, and he does a fantastic job with the kids. Service was awesome, so forth. Meeting was short, probably biggest highlight was, we're meeting some problems at the airport site, because all the rain and soft soil, they have yet to pass a soil sample thing so they can put footers and stuff in, they're ready to go, but they're talking about now maybe moving the building to thirty feet one way or the other to try and get a little better soil, but hopefully that will get taken care of. They're also talking about trying to avoid the expense of putting some concrete filler in the back fill and in the sand around it so that they can save some money, but we'll see what happens with that. The other highlight of the meeting was, we adjourned to executive session. Can't discuss what it was, you know, the details, but we're looking at, the purpose of executive session was find a replacement for Mr. Graff and what that process is going to be, and set the timetables and so forth, so hopefully that will get filled pretty quickly.
He's leaving at the end of the year?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Time, did we receive any public comment?
We did not.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on to the reports and recommendations.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Young. Three items in the reports and recommendations. Letter A is personnel. This is around employment, supplementals and stipends, including leadership positions, club sponsors, and internal subbing. There are no new positions added in there. Letter B is policy approval, as read and discussed at the previous board meeting. And then letter C, the M O U that we discussed earlier this evening over the I S vacancy at Elda.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we call the roll, please?
Yes. Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelter?
Yes.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes. Okay, next, that's it?
Yep. Steve's turn.
Yeah, as I mentioned, a light, a light agenda tonight under the treasure section. Basically, we have four different reports that we'll be approving. First are our donations. We have a handful of donations from various organizations this month. Our investment report from Red Tree Financial Services, and then also our cash summary and general fund comparison report, which looks at the general fund, where the general fund is at this fiscal year, fiscal twenty-five, compared to the same month in last year fiscal twenty-five. So it's just kind of a, a management tool that we can look at to see where we're trending in the major categories, revenue and expenses within the general fund. I do want to mention as well that, obviously presented the forecast last month, we have, we'll have the winter newsletter going out to the community in January, and, and part of, a big part of that newsletter this time will be kind of a deep dive into the forecast and looking at the overall financial picture of the district. So people should be receiving that at some point in January.
Okay, sounds good. Do we have a motion to approve the treasurer's recommendations and reports?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we call the roll, please?
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelter?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes, the motion passes. All right, do we have any board committee reports this evening?
Facilities meeting did meet yesterday, yesterday evening. Kind of a light agenda. We talked about a couple equipment purchases, some replacement equipment for groundskeeping, and as well as some shifting around of equipment to satisfy some sports needs as well. So we should be able to effectively remove, remove snow and salt a little bit, again, a little bit more effectively. Some of the equipment's getting old. I think we're pushing fifteen, twenty years. Some of it, I think, was around when I was a student, so we are.
That old, that old, huh?
Yeah. So we've got some equipment that we're looking at, and then, other than that, I, I think, project-wise, we don't have too much going on. We have some general maintenance repairs going around the, the district. I know we, we kind of always have a placeholder for roofing repairs, those are kind of inevitable. But other than that, I think that the biggest thing we had was some, some possible geothermal issues out at Morgan. So we've, Devin and his staff are looking into that and keeping an eye on it, so. Anything else, Brett?
No, that's good.
Okay.
Other than that, we had a finance committee meeting last week. Like Steve said, I was fairly light. Just wanted to point out that, you know, some of the ways, I think the one takeaway I had was kind of how we pay the bond off and how we're keeping extra money. So there's, you know, every year there's a, a one-time payment for the bond for the high school and some other smaller bonds. And the way that we were doing it in the past, we would send a check, and the newer way, we're able to keep money in our account longer and earn more interest while it's in there. So we're, we're able to make money on interest where before we, we weren't. So just kind of another way to.
Yeah, that, that payment, this year's payment was about one point five million. So again, in today's interest environment that we're in, mailing that check in October or November as opposed to wiring those funds a couple of days before they're due, that's a pretty significant amount of interest that you can earn by leaving that money in the account just for, you know, thirty to sixty days longer.
Now, that interest has to be applied towards the bond?
It's not.
Into the bond account?
The money is all in our operating account for the bond payment, so it, it just earns interest on the balance. It's carried there.
We get the interest in it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
So you figure you get an additional sixty days' worth of?
Right.
Interest on roughly one point five million, so.
Yeah. That's good. All right. Any others? Okay, thank you very much. This time, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to prepare for, conduct,